Call the meeting order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome to the February 16th, 2016 Post Falls City Council meeting. Clerk will note that all council members with the exception of Mr. Wolf are present, Dan and Alan is excused. Under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, have a few announcements. The Boys and Girls Club is in need of volunteers. Come out to the club this Thursday, February 18th, from 5:45 to 6:15 PM to learn how you can help. Also this Thursday, the Jacklin Archon Cultural Center is hosting a Pan Asian Experience from 6:00 to 9:00 with Asian cuisine, live entertainment, a live auction, and silent auction items, and Chinese raffle. I have no idea what that is, but it sounds interesting. Tickets are $75 a person. The 2016 Post Falls Senior Class Auction is this Saturday, February 20th, at 6:00 PM at the Greyhound Park. This fundraiser ensures that the senior class has a fun, safe graduation, all-nighter party. Tickets are $15 a person, or $25 per couple, and can be purchased at the Post Falls Chamber. And the 20th anniversary of Weinstein &amp; Dine is Saturday, March 5th, at 7:00 PM. Tickets are available at Columbia Bank, Mountain West Bank, Trading Center, Super One, Inateca, School District Office, and the Chamber of Commerce. And it doesn't say, but I'm assuming it's out at the Greyhound Park, the Coeur d'Alene Event Center, or whatever it's called now, I'm sorry, I always forget.
Yeah, Grapefruit place out there.
Out there.
That way.
So. And I'd like to read a letter. It's from the Post Falls Food Bank. It says, "Greetings. I would like to thank you for your generous donation of $8,294.68 to support the Post Falls Food Bank. Throughout the year, the food bank serves over 2,000 families living in poverty in our community. Over half of those we serve are seniors and the disabled who are living on a very small fixed income. Your support helps ensure the food bank will be able to continue providing much-needed nutritious food to those who need it most. Thank you again for partnering with us to serve our community. Sincerely, Leslie Orth, Director, Post Falls Food Bank." And I had Shannon check, and that $8,294.68 comes through the city from people who donate on their utility bills. So, that's just another great example of the generosity we have in our city. So, thank you very much. Under appointments, I do have a few. The first is appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission of Rick Nordham and Nelson Gorley. I would entertain, ask for council confirmation, entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve Rick Nordham and Nelson Gorley to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Sean and Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. The second is appointments to Planning and Zoning Commission, and I am presenting the names of Vicky Jo Carey, Mark Latham, and a new member, Louis Bustamante, to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll make a motion that we put Vicky Jo Carey, Mark Latham, and Louis Bustamante on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Sean and Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Sean, then, would you present the very short consent calendar?
Item 8 is minutes from the February 2nd, 2016 City Council meeting. Item B is payables, January 26th, 2016 through February 8th, 2016. Item C is sales agreement with Frank Bone for the purchase of the retired dog, Koda, police dog, Koda.
Any questions?
I move for approval of consent calendar.
I have one question, excuse me, Ms. Middlet.
I didn't have a question, but I would just like to say thank you to Officer Bone for giving Koda a lifetime home. It's just perfect, so.
I have a feeling it would have been much more difficult to try to remove him from the home.
Yes. Yeah.
So, we had a motion by Mr. Borders, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Thorson, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Tonight, we have one public hearing, and it's on Post Falls Title 18A Amendment, File Number TA-1601. And Mr. Manley's going to present, and I should, I'm sorry, I should announce anybody who wishes to testify. There are forms in the back you can fill out and present them to Shannon, and we'll allow you to testify tonight. That'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. John Manley introducing the Title 18A tax amendment, case file TA-1601. The applicant's City Post Falls Planning Division, and the requested action is to review and approve the proposed tax amendment to Title 18A. The purpose of this proposed amendment is to improve the level of service to the community by creating more clarity and consistency within Title 18A. For a little background, Smart Code was adopted July 6th of 2010, and it's been implemented for five to six years. And we've learned through that some good and some bad with that. Tonight's tax amendment doesn't handle or address all the issues with it, but it does get to the meat of one issue that's been a bone of contention, and that is whether or not Smart Code should be mandatory or discretionary. So, this proposed change will allow Smart Code to be either discretionary or mandatory for lands greater than 10 acres. Currently, the way it states in the code is for lands less than 10 acres, City Council has the option to approve your Euclidian-based zoning, but not if it's over 10. What this will do is allow City Council to approve either zoning code that we have, either Title 18 or Title 18A. Other items that are addressed within this proposed tax amendment is, and it'll be more consistent with our subdivision regulations also, that if they intend to do phasing, then they're gonna propose a phasing plan with either an infill neighborhood plan or a regular neighborhood plan. Difference is, if it's within the city, that would be considered an infill, or surrounded by a county pocket, it'd be an infill neighborhood plan. Any sort of annexations outside of the perimeter would be more of your, just a standard neighborhood plan. There's also some clarity for dealing with visibility triangles in rear lanes or rear alleys. Where that comes into play is, in the city center area, we have some alleys that may be used for commercial access for rear parking areas, and where they access some of your major collectors would allow staff to then look at, with the developer, what would be the appropriate visibility triangle for public safety and whatnot. Also, there's some added additional definitions within this proposed tax amendment, as well as within the text allows, currently, a lot of decisions are made by the Development Review Committee. What we've done is propose changing that to be done by the zoning administrator. This would expedite some decisions, that way we're not pulling together everybody to meet and discuss an item. Obviously, the zoning administrator would still consult with, you know, police, fire, engineering, and a lot of other departments applicable to the decision.
John, can I ask you a quick question on that?
Yeah.
Excuse my interruption. Who is the zoning administrator?
As of right now, I would say Russ Canold would be the zoning administrator, and he's also been designated to me to serve as that role, that capacity too, at times.
So, anyone going in would know who that person is?
Um, well, it's not addressed in the text. They may not know the actual individual, but if they came in and asked, people know who to direct them to.
Thank you, excuse my interruption.
Can I just have a follow-up on that? And so, John, are you saying that when Russ is not available, that he will have you do it, or are you sharing that? I don't understand.
It's more or less, for the most part, I'm acting in the capacity of the zoning administrator, but I'm more like his designee, but he is the zoning administrator. I don't know if that makes sense. I don't know, Warren, if you wanna...
Sure. The way the code is structured, it refers to the zoning administrator, or his or her designee typically, and so it authorizes that person to assign someone in their absence to fill that role, or, so that's essentially how it's structured. And that's fairly common across codes.
Okay, Linda?
Uh-huh, thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, John.
So, this would conclude the, more or less, the introduction and staff report. I kinda combined them, because it's not a real lengthy ordeal here, but, so, if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to...
Any other questions, John, since I jumped the gun by a page?
So, is there no longer a requirement, or is there not a requirement, to consult with the police department, fire department, school district, all that sort of thing? So, obviously, the staff we have presently, there's never gonna be an issue, but say, something crazy happens, a meteor hits the planet, and the next guy comes in and just starts making decisions without consulting others, would that then be against code?
We'd still follow the public process and notification due to notice jurisdictions. They're all gonna get noticed for any sort of subdivision or annexation, whether it's conventional or Smart Code, and then we would get comments from them and include them if it was pertinent.
So, it doesn't change the process significantly from what it is now in terms of consulting the other departments? Is that correct?
No, if anything, it allows the development to go back to pre-2010-type status if the City Council so chooses.
Right. I was just more about the code in terms of consulting with police and fire and school district and everything else. That's still gonna happen, it's still by ordinance somewhere.
Correct.
It has to happen, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, John.
All right, thank you.
You were the staff reporter, I had the applicant, or is there anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
I'm not gonna let you re, well, would you like to rebut yourself, John?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay. I will close the public hearing. John, I do have one question for you, if I may, though. On Page 7, and this is just for informational purpose, but on Page 7, you talk about base density, and it says, "A number of dwelling units per gross acre," and then there's some stuff crossed out, but it says, "Applied residential development of any given project," and it excludes mixed-use buildings, projects, and other uses. So, my question is, density is always a thing that I look at, and I'm just trying to understand what that's telling me. So, you've got a base density, but if it excludes other uses, mixed use, et cetera, how do we know what the true base density of it is?
There is a part of Smart Code that deals with, for commercial buildings, you take the square footage, there's residential equivalency for that area, so then you could extrapolate what the base density is out of office space or commercial space. So, I'm looking here on Page, was it Page 7?
Top of Page 7, yes. It confused me when it said it excluded those.
So, basically, the way this is worded would be, if it's a mixed-use building, then you wouldn't be doing that base density analysis, so as long as it was multiple uses. I think it's because it becomes, it does become a little cumbersome to be doing all these equivalencies.
It'd be either/or, though, as opposed to combination thereof.
Like a single-use commercial building, we would still go back to the... The way it says "other uses," I would concede is a little, because it's basically deferring anything other than residential would be excluded from the base density analysis, the way that's worded.
Okay. Good, thanks, didn't mean to throw a curve at you, it just didn't make sense, so.
That's fine.
Appreciate it. Any comments from council?
I would make a motion to approve Post Falls Title 18A Amendment, File Number TA-1601, with the edits presented in our package.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Thanks, John. Would it date me if I stated that Smart Code was gonna be the greatest thing since lice bread? And ever since it's been in place, we have people saying, "That ain't such a good deal." So, I appreciate the fact that we now have some flexibility, and you can go either way. I think it'll make it much more workable. Unfinished business, first is Spokane River Stewardship Partners. Mr. Beecham.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. John Beecham, Environmental Manager. At the January 19th City Council meeting, on the consent calendar was an updated agreement with Spokane River Stewardship Partners, or SRSP, which is much easier to say. There were some questions about that agreement, and I was not present to field those questions, so I would like to take this opportunity, give you the quick summary of what the group is, and then field any questions you might have. The group is made up of all of the NPDES permit holders on Spokane River and the utility company, Avista. The purpose of the group is to get together and discuss current issues going on within the river, occasionally provide comments on any permits that might be pending, or new rules that might be pending, but mostly just a clearinghouse of ideas, ways we might move forward together for the betterment of the river and our communities as a whole. That group hires a facilitator to run the meetings. There's six cities, two industries, and Avista, so the meetings get a little bulky if there's not someone to keep them moving. That is Lisa Dally Wilson, who's mentioned in your documentation. And then Lisa also provides technical expertise on environmental issues to the group. All of the members pay a share of that agreement, which is really what this MOA is solidifying, is what that share of any expense is. Post Falls' share is 5.87%, which means last year, we got about $150,000 worth of facilitation and technical expertise for right at $8,800. So, it's a pretty decent deal, as far as technical expertise goes. I do expect similar expenses if we continue this year, and those expenses would be run through our typical purchasing, going through the PO process for authorizing those purchases. And I really think that's the quick summary of this. Councilor Wolf was the one with a lot of questions. I did reach out to him via email. He asked if I would recommend that we continue or not recommend, and I wanted to bring to you that I would recommend we continue with this partnership. I think it's a good opportunity to interface with our similar entities up and down the river. So, with that, any questions?
I have a quick one for you. One of Al's questions was dealing with Lisa Dally Wilson's hourly rate, and I know he specifically mentioned that. Did you touch base with him on that?
Not specifically with the rate. I believe her rate is $150 an hour.
It said 135, and I know that was a specific question he asked, but it sounds to me like she's got the technical expertise and the leadership, so I mean, you're not...
All right. I think that's an appropriate salary for the work she's providing for the group.
Okay. I just wanted to mention it, because I know he did ask that, so. Any other questions? Joe?
Is there formal selection process for that position?
There was at the onset of the group, about three years ago, I believe, they had an RFQ. I should back up. Lisa Dally Wilson was not the original facilitator for the group. I believe someone by the name of Sarah Hubbard, if I have the name correct, was. She retired or moved on, and the group then went through a competitive proposal to select Lisa Dally Wilson as that, or Dally Environmental, for that position.
So, are there procedures for the gathering of the competitive bids, for succession, should somebody, you know, should say she'd move on or not perform? Are there formal policies in place for that, or is it just kind of ad hoc at this point?
At this point, it is via contract amendments, extending her current contract, and I should back up and say, because of the kind of complex nature of getting everybody to agree to, on any sort of contract document, Avista actually administers the contract with Lisa Dally Wilson or Dally Environmental on behalf of the SRSP. So, as long as the SRSP members agree to help with payment of services, then Avista carries that contract, and it's at some degree of risk to them, but it's, the contract between those two entities doesn't involve City Post Falls directly.
And I'm gonna follow up some stupid questions. Does the SRSP have a Board of Directors? Are there bylaws? Are there, is there a structure that maintains the...
No, there's not. This MOA that you see in your packet is the full agreement there is between the partners, and it is really just to provide a way to pay for these facilitation services, and then anything else the group might find it interesting to seek funding for.
And just to reiterate, though, you feel like the value gotten for the money Post Falls puts in is far exceeds the money put in, is that true?
That is correct.
Okay, that's the important part.
It seems to me that one of the other questions that we had was, is this duplicated in any of our other memberships with other organizations?
That's a really good question. We are a member of several different organizations. This one is the only organization specific to the NPDES dischargers on the river with the addition of Avista, so I would say it's not duplicated. There are other groups, such as the Idaho-Washington Aquifer Collaborative, that deals more with drinking water. So, an example of the way that's not duplication is, we might send the same person to that group, which would be me, but the City of Spokane would send a very different group of people to the water-related meeting versus a wastewater-related meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You answered the questions.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, John.
Linda's got one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Linda, I missed you.
No, I just wanted to ask you, Mayor, was this not on the consent calendar last time? So, what, how are we acting today?
That's a good point. Do we need a motion to, since it was on the consent? Thank you, Linda.
It was removed from the consent and brought forward back to you tonight, so it'd be a motion to approve tonight.
Okay.
Okay, I would move to approve the Spokane River Stewardship Partners Agreement set out by John Beecham.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Sean and Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thanks for the catch, Linda. Next item up is a master bond ordinance, wastewater fund, Jason Faulkner, and just let me start it out by saying it was wonderful reading.
Just thrilling.
I'm glad you appreciate it. At the last council meeting, I talked about the city was looking at doing, restructuring some debt on the wastewater treatment plant, and I had wanted everybody to know that it was gonna be on the next meeting, that I was gonna have some, that there's a master ordinance and a supplemental ordinance. And this time, I just want to explain what the two are about, just, and then field any questions, because ordinances are later on in the agenda. The first one in the master ordinance is, it should basically spell out how you operate your organization and how your bonds are treated. And so, the first one is something, we wanted to clean up some IDQ language in there, wanted to also authorize a direct placement for the debt, which is, that's how I plan on restructuring it, is using a direct placement or purchasing, and also authorizing revenue bonds. And also, there was some different language cleaned up throughout the ordinance, which I included in your council packet, the redline copy, so you could see what changed and what was still the same. The second part, well, I will comment on the supplemental ordinance. Supplemental ordinance had a couple items that were, it authorizes the 2016 bonds to refinance the 2005, 2008 into the 2016. It also authorizes the direct placement purchase with Mountain West Bank, and the third one establishes an escrow account with US Bank. And the escrow account is needed because the bonds are usually, for 10 years, are outstanding, and then after the 10 years, they will be callable. The 2008 bonds aren't callable yet, and so the escrow account needs to be established for when the bonds are callable, then the bondholders will get the money at that time. So, anybody has any questions?
So, the important question, and I know it was in there, but I think it's good for the public to know, what's this going to save the City of Post Falls?
It'll save just over $240,000 from the current rate to the rate that Mountain West was willing to provide us at the 1.84%.
Which is outstanding.
Which is a pretty good rate.
Looking at it, and for the help you received, and for Mountain West for giving away such a low rate, because that's wonderful.
That's a great rate.
Another question on that, too. Can't think of what it was right now, it'll come back to me.
Okay.
Any other questions, Jason?
Good job, Jason.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job, thank you. Next item up, citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If you care to address the council, we'll let you come forward and state your name, and we'll allow you five minutes. Bob, come on up.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor of Council. Okay, I let this matter drop back before the snow flew. Well, thank goodness spring's right around the corner. And I really haven't gotten any information from the city on whether Avista finally agreed to repair our streets that they turned into a patchwork quilt, and whether they agreed to reseal coat them, whether they agreed to anything. And I know that there were supposed to be some meetings that were supposed to happen during the winter, but so far, I haven't heard anything, and since the seasons are changing, and they're probably gonna be out there digging their holes again someplace, I'd kinda like to know.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Actually, I can respond to that tonight. The meetings are scheduled for the spring, whether, not over the winter, because we won't start the resale, or the resurfacing, and Russ can speak to this also, until the summer. We are gonna be resurfacing, it's what participation Avista will have with us in the resurfacing of that. Russ actually sent an email to Patty Shay and to Sue Baldwin today, asking again about setting up a meeting with them, so.
So, Mr. Flowers, we will keep you posted.
They will not be in Post Falls cutting any more streets this year in regards to the gas line replacement. They are completely done with Post Falls.
So, we'll keep you posted, Bob. Thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else? Sean and, next item up is new business, federal aid grant application for the Chase Road BNSF Railways Crossing improvements. Mr. Paulus?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This evening, when you get to the ordinance and resolutions portion of your agenda, there are gonna be two resolutions for your consideration, and they are for the consideration of a federal aid grant application of a roundabout at the intersection of Pole Line Avenue and Chase Road, and for the application of railway-grade improvements at the intersection of the Burlington Northern-San Francisco Railway Crossing at Chase Road, and that's just south of Celtees Elementary School. If you approve both those resolutions, our applications, if funded, would account for about $117,000 in match monies. Those match monies would come from our transportation impact fee accounts, and our impact fee accounts currently have more than that amount of money available and unallocated. Funding for this project, in January, KMPO issued a notice of project availability, and this was gonna be coming from what's called Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act, or the FAST Act. The FAST Act allows for the Federal Highway Administration to distribute additional monies. KMPO is estimating that there will be another $3 million of monies above and beyond what they normally see in the next five years. Normally, they receive about $1.5 million a year. This will jump them from about $7 million up to $10 million. That amount could be higher, depending upon how ITD does their formulation down in Boise, and what the different KM, or what the different metropolitan planning organizations get. In terms of project eligibility, a project needs to be on or... In terms of project eligibility, a project needs to be on or impact a principal arterial road, a minor arterial, or a collector roadway. It must primarily be for transportation purposes, and it must be on the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. In our case, we had to take a look at our projects and say which projects are on our city's master plan, as well as on the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. That way, we would have a funding source to, can, to account for the match. In Idaho, the match requirement is 7.34%. That's a benefit to us. Almost every other state in the country has a 20% match for these same funds. The first project we're looking at is the Pole Line Avenue and Chase Road Roundabout. You can see from this concept sketch that the roundabout would be a little bit offset to the west. It's needed to do this for two purposes. One, we have some right-of-way constraints in the northwest cor, or northeast corner with the existing housing development, and in the southeast corner, we have some of Vista utility poles that would be very expensive to relocate. Not touching those poles, but having other utilities to relocate is still accounting for close to $100,000 in this roundabout project. We do have sufficient right-of-ways on the west side of the road due to recent annexation activities that the city has acquired those rights of way. The estimated cost of this project is about $1.1 million, and the city's match would be about $83,000.
Can I ask a quick question, Rob?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I like roundabouts. I'm gonna like that one a lot when it goes in. Question I have is that cost seems extremely high. Is that what typical roundabouts cost?
If you look at a typical roundabout, and just in a really small footprint, you can be looking at around $400,000 to $500,000. Because we're looking at some grant monies, we're also able to address some other deficiencies transportation-wise in this area. For example, the pavement section in that area is still a little bit of chip seal and it needs some re-establishment above and beyond what a normal roundabout cost would be. We have a very small amount of right-of-way acquisition, there's less than 100 square feet in there, that's not a huge cost. Easement, I've already talked with Vista, they're pretty much interested and would be willing to work with us on it, on an easement on their side. We would be extending the multi-use bicycle trail on the south side of Pole Line Avenue from the Montrose subdivision to the intersection. That's a benefit to pedestrians and bicyclists, and allows for connectivity for people heading more into the Spokane Street area where we have Sportsman's Park, the cemetery, there's the, that's the closest CityLink bus location. It also allows us to get a little bit more distance on the asphalt we would be doing widening on and curb and gutter, so that we can get bicycle lanes to connect to what we did last summer on Pole Line Avenue. So, we've expanded beyond just a normal roundabout.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Currently, that intersection operates at what we consider a level of service A. That means a typical vehicle from our model shows about eight seconds of average delay per vehicle. By the year 2035, this intersection is anticipated to be operating at a level of service of F. That means average vehicle is gonna experience about 45 seconds of delay. By putting in a roundabout, we'll get the level of service to what they call a level of service C, that'd be around 20 to 30 seconds of delay per vehicle, and that is above and beyond what our minimum design level of service would be by that timeframe. The next intersection we're looking at is the Chase Road Burlington Northern Railways Crossing Improvements. This project would improve the rail crossing, which is currently below standards as far as safety. In addition to making safety improvements, by the year 2035, levels of service are expected to drop to a level of service F across there. Basically, there's not enough width to handle the capacity of traffic going across there. By widening that rail crossing, we're gonna be able to get it up to about a level of service B, maybe a little bit higher. We've increased the cost of the project a little bit. Typically, if you were to just go in there and widen the railroad, railroad planking and put in a little bit of asphalt, patch it back in, you'd be looking at over $100,000 in just railroad planking itself. We took a look at the entire corridor from Mullen Avenue to 12th Avenue and saw that there was some pedestrian improvements that could be made. The pink or magenta line along the bottom would be to continue the existing multi-use bicycle pedestrian trail down to Mullen Avenue, and then we would also be able to get a sidewalk crossing in place on the east side to connect from the Mullen Avenue side to the Seltice Elementary. We additionally put into the project placing the rapid flashing yellow beacons for the school crossing over there to get to Seltice Elementary, and some restriping to accommodate bicycle lanes. The estimated project cost is about $462,000, of which we'd be looking at $34,000. Now, in any federal aid grant, one of the things to remember is we are usually looking at at least $100,000 in design engineering costs. A good portion of that is just to get through the federal aid process, making sure we have the correct environmental documents done, the correct right-of-way documentation. ITD and the Federal Highway Administration is very particular about that. So, that's a little bit of a higher-end cost, but still, at the end of the day, we're able to get more improvements done for a lower cost than if we did it with just our plain impact fee dollars alone. I open up to any other questions you might have.
Sure.
So, the $83,000 city match and the $34,000 city match, that would come out of our impact fee fund?
That would come out of our impact fee...
To all of them?
That is correct.
That already exists in there?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure to know the answer to this question, but the roundabout, going back to that, what is the cost of that roundabout in terms of the initial capital expenditure plus maintenance versus, say, a stoplight? More or less?
More or less. I can't give you the, the last time I really looked hard at those dollars was when I was looking at pre-LED lights in a traffic signal. Putting in LED lights for the red, yellow, and green in a traffic signal has dropped significantly the cost of regular operations on a traffic signal. You still have to go in on a traffic signal and change those bulbs about every four to five years. Roundabout is gonna operate whether or not you have electricity or not. Biggest issue about a roundabout that myself, I'm a proponent of, is the safety elements of a roundabout. Your collision rates go down significantly in a roundabout. In particular, your injury-producing collisions and your fatalities go down, the, there's a National Insurance Institute that did a study back in the early 2000 timeframe, and they showed that when you compare a signalized intersection versus a roundabout, a roundabout is gonna have 60% fewer injury-causing collisions and 90% fewer fatalities. That's a very big improvement, and that's where we usually see the biggest cost. Another item to look at is a typical signalized intersection is gonna have about a 10-year life expectancy before its electronic equipment starts going out. Roundabout has about a 20-year life expectancy in its materials. Does that answer your questions sufficiently?
You are a walking encyclopedia. Thank you.
I had to learn about roundabouts and educate council years ago about it, so...
Well, thank you.
Remember the first questions, the questions that came up with the first roundabout? People didn't like them, I'm sure there are people that still don't, but they do move traffic, and we've seen a lot of them, so...
Well, I appreciated the fact in that first public hearing a long time ago about roundabouts, you had me go and call, I think I called about 12 different municipalities around the western United States to find out how the different police chiefs and fire chiefs liked roundabouts or didn't. And I think in our experiences with the six that we have, we've found the same thing. Initially, there are more people who are opposed to roundabouts than who like them, but after they start to drive them, more people enjoy them from the aesthetics, the safety, and the convenience of getting through them versus an always-stop or a traffic signal.
So, Rob, in all your studying of roundabouts, do you signal to enter and exit a roundabout? Because that was a big discussion on the police's Facebook page, what, two, three weeks ago?
The vehicle guidebook for the state of Idaho does not say that you have to signal in order to enter or leave a roundabout. The engineering entities do recommend that you do it. It is not taught in the driver's education program. My daughter recently ed...
He is a walking encyclopedia.
Yeah. My daughter recently went through driver's ed, and she specifically told me that her instructor asked her, "Who taught you how to signal through a roundabout?" So...
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Rob, just for your information, in Walla Walla, they made huge improvements on the west side of town. They've got back-to-back roundabouts, a block apart, so that was, that's always a fun one to try to figure out where you're going when you get down there. One block and there's two roundabouts, so, just a thought. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
We do not need an action on that at this time, correct? Forthcoming?
Correct, it's resolutions.
Good. Which is where we are. We've got a whole tassele of them tonight. The first is an ordinance dealing with the Building Code Board of Appeals Amendment.
Move to place the ordinance, Building Code Board of Appeals Amendment on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, amending Section 2.12.050 to provide for membership requirements for members of the Building Code Board of Appeals and to provide for hearing procedures for hearings before the board, including an opportunity to present information, an appeal deadline, and a voting requirement for overturning the decision of the building official, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance, Building Code Board of Appeals Amendment, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, authorizing the issuance and sale of wastewater revenue bonds from time to time to provide funds necessary to finance or refinance improvements to the city's wastewater system, fixing the form, covenants, and certain terms of the bonds to be issued, providing for the registration and authentication of bonds, pledging revenues for payment of debt service on bonds issued hereunder, providing for certain federal tax covenants with respect to the bonds, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to approve the ordinance, Master Bond Wastewater Fund, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next order up, supplemental bond wastewater fund.
Move to place the ordinance, supplemental bond wastewater fund, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
A supplemental ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, authorizing the issuance and the, and sale of the city's wastewater revenue refunding bond, Series 2016, in the principal amount of $2,970,000 to provide funds necessary to refinance improvements to the city's wastewater system, ratifying the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, providing for the private sale of the 2016 bond, pledging revenues for payment of the 2016 bond, fixing the form and terms of the 2016 bond, providing for other matters properly relating thereto, and providing for the effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance, supplemental bond wastewater fund, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Final ordinance deals with the fire protection amendment.
Move to place the ordinance, Fire Protection Amendment, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion seconds, further discussion. Please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, amending Chapter 8.08 by providing definitions of natural area, public parks, and public property, prohibiting possession of fireworks on public property, regulating fire lanterns, prohibiting burning and smoking on public properties except in authorized locations, prohibiting open burning on private properties during Phase II fire emergencies, providing that violations of Chapter 8.08, other than a first offense of possessing fireworks on public property, are misdemeanors punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000 or by imprisonment of not more than six months or both, providing that a first offense of possessing fireworks on public property is an infraction punishable by a fine not to exceed $300, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance, Fire Protection Amendment, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next up is a resolution dealing with federal aid grant application for Chase Road BNSF Railroad Crossing Improvements.
Move to approve the federal aid grant application for Chase Road BNSF Railroad's Crossing Improvements.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. And the final is the resolution for the federal aid, federal aid grant application for the Pole Line Avenue-Chase Road Roundabout Project.
Move to approve the resolution, federal aid grant application for Pole Line Avenue-Chase Road Roundabout Project.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item up, administrative staff reports, purchasing policy, Mr. Faulkner presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Currently, I'm working on revising the city's purchasing policy. What, there's gonna be some language cleanup, but the main issue that I, that we currently have with it is that sometimes it takes a while to get a purchase order created from requisition. Currently, it goes from department head to city administrator to mayor, and then finance generates the purchase order. I'm looking at, and I'll bring back to council for your approval, the piece where it removed the, the city administrator authority and also the, the mayor signing off on purchase orders. It was the, the purchases will still comply with Idaho law, we'll, the, the items purchased will still need to be budgeted to go through the budget process. Mayor will still have to sign the contract agreements if it's over a certain dollar amount. Those pieces will still remain the same. The only part I want to do is to expedite the creation of a purchase order.
Checks and balances will remain in place?
Everything will remain the same. The, like I said, all contracts will be signed by the mayor. The, the items that'll be purchased will still have to be budgeted for. If it's not in the budget, it'll be amended. Yeah, checks and balances will still be, still be, still be in place.
Linda?
Could I just ask, what is that number?
Currently, it goes from fi-- anything over $5,000 goes to city administrator, anything over, oh, I'm sorry, it goes to the department, department head. Anything over $10,000 goes to city administrator, and then over that goes to the ma-- there's a dollar amount that goes, goes to the mayor after, after Shelley sees it.
$25,000.
Twenty-five thousand, yeah.
So you're, you're saying that those essentially, regardless of the value, the city administrator and the mayor will no longer be involved? Is that right?
Correct. It'll go from department head to be accountable, and then also finance will, will approve the, the, the final portion of the purchase order.
So even if it's $2 million for something to the wastewater plant?
Good point. If the, if it's still a contract, still, the contract will be in place with the mayor, we'll still have to sign it regardless of, of the purchase order. If it's a, if it goes into contract, the mayor still has to sign all, all city contracts.
This is probably a semantics thing, but at, at least in the, in the energy world, all purchase orders are contracts. So what is, what's the differentiating factor here between what's a contract and what's not?
The city has a policy of anything over 15, any purchase over $1,500 requires a, a purchase order. The PD has a different requirement that I believe there's is $25 or $50 purchase that require a purchase order. So that's our, our in-house of knowing what, what items are outstanding to be paid. So that is a tracking mechanism so we know what invoices are out there.
Purchase orders are simply a tracking mechanism, which finance would verify that the budget amount is there. All of the purchases themselves are approved at council level when the purchase is made or by contract. So everything is still being approved by the same levels. It's just the purchase order itself no longer requires my signature or the mayor's signature.
So the, nothing's changing except for the paper trail, essentially?
Right. We're just eliminating paper. It's, it's sort of like when we have personnel action forms right now. Somebody changes an address, I have to sign it. The city administrator really doesn't need to sign off on a personnel action form for an employee to change their address. So we're going through and just kind of cleaning up some of those policies that we have that are not necessarily beneficial and can hold the process up.
Right. And I understand that. I was just, it was more of a semantic question that, you know, contract versus non-contract. You still have to sign all the contracts, which I assume mean are for ongoing services, that sort of thing. But if it's a one-time purchase that's large?
Still goes through council. Council still approves it on the, on the AP list. So here's a good example. When the police decided to purchase their cars, that was contract and resolution both approved by council, and Pat was waiting for approval from myself and the mayor, and couldn't get the order placed on the cars because of this verification that the budget was there, which Jason can simply do.
I'm just, I'm just making sure I'm clear. Now, all you're doing is removing redundancy, essentially?
Yes.
Okay.
My question was, as long as we still have the checks and balances in place to control it.
And I, I just didn't quite have it all in my head quite straight, and now I'm, now I'm with it, so. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you very much. We didn't need a motion on that, did we, at this point?
No.
Disinformation. Great. Thank you. Mayor, comments? You know, I just, I guess on a personal note, want to thank Post Falls High School. I went out to watch the ladies' basketball team play the other night and received my first-ever senior citizen discount ticket. And it saved me a dollar. And she very politely looked at me and said, "So where are you?" And I thought I was in the gym, and she pointed to the chart. And it saved me a dollar. So I'd just like to thank them for making it a memorable, memorable day, sort of. And now Counselor Wilhelm can join me, so.
Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Council comments?
I got a head start on you both. I've been taking advantage of that for a few years. And I wanted to tell Rob Paulus, I was one of those people that was, I can't say I was anti-roundabout. I was just not a fan. And because I live in Pioneer Ridge, you've created roundabouts everywhere I go. So I have had plenty of experience on the roundabouts, and, and I'm, I'm warming up. So now you're going to put one on Chase Road. So I've got the whole gamut. But Paula Rehrman, that a lot of us know, is on Urban Renewal. Paula grew up in Ireland, and one of the things that she said, because they have roundabouts, they have like five-lane roundabouts. And one of the things that she always said that is very helpful for me, when you're in, you cannot send. Meaning that once you're in that roundabout, you got the right-of-way. So anybody coming from the outside has to, we haven't got to the five-lane ones yet, but so when you're in, you cannot send. So there you go. And gasoline tax. I wanted to bring that up. I'd had quite a few comments about whether the city of Post Falls had a tax on gasoline because the last week or two, our gas in Post Falls throughout at, at every station was between 25 and 35 cents a gallon higher than it was in Coeur d'Alene. It made no difference what the brand was of the gas. And people were saying, well, that's because Post Falls, the city of Post Falls, has a gas tax. We do not. Ms. Shelley, would you verify that the city of Post Falls?
I will verify that all of the gas tax throughout the state of the Idaho, throughout the state of Idaho is exactly the same. Post Falls does not have its own individual gas tax.
And so it's up to the individual station owners?
It is.
What the market will bear, and evidently, this market is bearing 25 to 35 cents a gallon more.
And, and Coeur d'Alene, one of the interesting things is most of the stations there are listing a gas, a cash price for their gas. And if you pull in, want to use your credit card, it's actually 10 cents a gallon more in Post Falls. They don't discount for cash at most of the stations. I know the one down here on Spokane Street does. But that also is part of what I'm being told is the reason why there's that difference. They, I'd heard, and I tried to find some research on it, that someone turned it over to the Attorney General, and the gas prices were significantly different before, but there was no real formal investigation. But it's mainly competition-based, and that's what the analysts have kind of said, is the competition in Coeur d'Alene with having Costco and Albertsons and Safeway and all the grocery stores kind of jump on board and give those extra discounts has really kept the price lower in Coeur d'Alene. Because traditionally, when I started working in 1989 in Post Falls, it had the lower gas prices, and everybody came to Post Falls to get gas.
Did you?
Shelley, did you say that in Coeur d'Alene, if you use your credit card, it's 10 cents a gallon higher?
At many, the station Safeway, for example, is 10 cents a gallon higher right now. And I know the Chevron stations also charge. I'm not sure if it's five or 10 cents more.
Exxon's 10 cents.
Yeah, it's 10 cents at Exxon. So if you're using a credit card, it does cost more than the price that's listed on their board out front.
It's gas cash. But the bottom line is, Post Falls does not charge an additional city municipal tax?
We do not.
Per gallon of gasoline, so.
Two follow-up comments on that, Carrie. First of all, it's been significantly longer than two months that we've been significantly more expensive.
But 35 cents, I think, was the, I think that was the, the tipping point.
But the other comment I'd like to make is to Mr. Malloy, please don't take Counselor Thorson's comment literally. Once you're in, you cannot send. You got to behave yourself.
We've had some people in the roundabout the last couple of weeks that have had, they've sent, and, and high wa-- high, what is that? High-centered themselves on the, the rocks after they'd had a little too much, a little too much to drink. So they technically were not in the lanes. They were in the center of the roundabout when they were sending.
Do the speed limits still apply in a roundabout?
Yes, yes.
And why do they put a curve in the middle of the road, right? Any other comments?
I've got.
Go.
This is a, I guess it's a comment or kind of a question for, I guess it must be Russ, Captain Knight, Bill, Rob. I've received some emails and phone calls and in-person comments about the intersection at Greens Ferry and Seltice that is generally confusing to people trying to turn onto the bridge and so forth. And I've also, just last week, came up on two accidents at two separate times on that same intersection. So I don't know if you guys are seeing that at the, at the PD, any kind of interest, or if, or if there's any, any plans in the works to address that. But if you guys aren't aware of it, then.
Bill? Thanks, Bill.
Yeah. Mayor, council, we're aware that has been a problem for the community. Tom Lean and I have had several conversations. The contractor, the design build team that is under contract with the Post Falls Urban Real Agency, we really can't direct them to do that work, but Tom is on them, and telling them, you know, we need to at least get some new temporary striping down and do something on a temporary basis. They're coming up with a plan also this spring when we can put some permanent striping down and rearrange some of the signage up there, to totally modify that. So we're aware it's been a problem for the community, and, and we're addressing it and kind of cranking up the heat on the contractor with that, so.
Is there, I, I know there's only so much you can do, but is there a general timeline on the temporary fix?
I, we, we haven't heard back from the design build contractors yet. Tom and I had just had that conversation this morning, and said that he has conversations and some phone calls into him. So we're just going to, we'll continue to push him, and, and we're going to just get it done as soon as we can. So I don't have a date as yet.
Could you try, if possible, to bring an update back to us at our first meeting next month?
Yeah, be glad to. Thank you.
At, at least you guys are aware and working on it, so I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Linda?
I just have a comment for some of the staff. It's been a really, really busy time early in the year for the planning department, the building department, the parks department, the streets. And I've had occasion in the last couple of weeks to speak to many of the people that are here and some who aren't. And I just think that you guys do such a great job, such a great job, and I just want to personally thank you for that, because it is very stressful and busy out there. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Concur. We do not need an executive session.
We do not.
Next motion is?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We need to adjourn. Thank you very much.[1771.74]